Everyone, please stand for the pledge. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all the Archibald officials for giving us this opportunity to come here. Council President Brian Gilgallin, Councilwoman Erin Owen, Councilman David Moran, Councilman Tom Macuso, Councilman Francis Burke, and Councilwoman Kim Simon, Mayor Shirley Barrett, and particularly Borough Manager Bob Turleb. He has made this very comfortable for us. We're going to thank you all, and we'll get this meeting started, okay?
Vice President.
Listen.
Vice President.
Vice President. Oh, I'm sorry, Council Vice President Michael Sartano. I call for a motion to further approval of the meetings of last minutes of last meeting.
I'll make a motion through the minutes.
Second, okay. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Proclamation presentation.
Opportunity for the public to address the board's agenda items only.
I've been out of practice, I haven't had to do this on that. Okay. No, no, no one's interested? Okay. Proclamation presentation. Two one zero two eight one. Claiming, proclamation declaring November 21st is United Way Month in Lackawanna County.
I have a proclamation here, I'll read. Whereas for 100 years, the United Way of Lackawanna and Wayne Counties have brought people together to focus on the most important needs in the community to create a positive impact. And whereas, the theme for the 2021 United Way campaign is, united we fight, united we win. As we join in fighting for the education, financial stability, and health of everyone in Lackawanna and Wayne Counties, and whereas, the mission of the United Way is to improve the quality of life for the people in Lackawanna and Wayne Counties by serving as a catalyst for the community problem solving and conducting an efficient, encompassing volunteer fundraising effort to positively impact the community's most compelling social problems. And whereas, our United Way advances the common good by creating opportunities for a better life for all, its focus is on education, income, and health, the essential building blocks for a good quality of life. Community support is needed more than ever to live united through the United Way. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and recognize November 2021 as United Way Month in Lackawanna County. And here to speak on that, we have our area aging director, Jason Kavulich, and United Way President Gary Drapek. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. This is the beginning of our county United Way campaign, and thank you for the proclamation. It's incredibly important to the Human Services Department and the entire Lackawanna County community for the United Way campaign to be successful. Besides Lackawanna County Department of Human Services, the other major contributor of our provider network in our community is the United Way. They bring a neutrality to the table that we can't always offer, and they help us engage with our service providers, they help us engage with the community, and deliver like we did during the vaccine rollout and testing rollout. It was United Way volunteers that were calling the seniors. They made close to 11,000 phone calls for the county in engaging. They support everything from education to domestic violence to food, to food insecurity, to shelter activities. Everything that we need and we can't necessarily always have our hands on and our hands on the pulse of, United Way does for us. I want to thank my co-chair, Justin McGregor, who couldn't be with us today, Mr. Notariani, Rick Notary, and Joe Durenzo for helping us get our campaign together this year. Our campaign will launch in a different way next Friday, our payday Friday. It will be, it will be a virtual donation as opposed to what we typically did with the paper donation forms, and we're hoping to get as many county employees invested into giving that day as possible. And here with me is the President and CEO of the United Way, Gary Drapek, who is a friend and colleague, and I'm very proud to be associated with him and his organization.
Thanks, Jason. Appreciate it.
Gary.
Thank you again for inviting us to be up here. I would, I, you know, I don't want this to turn into a mutual admiration society, but I really want to thank Jason and the County Human Service Department, everybody in Lackawanna County for the work that was done this past 18 months or so. We, as a community, could not have survived the way we have survived without the work of people like Jason in the County Human Service Department. I have to tell you, in my position, it gives you the opportunity to kind of look around the state, and I'm in constant contact with people in the western part of the state, southwestern part of the state, southeastern part of the state, and they are amazed at our numbers when it comes to the number of individuals vaccinated this past couple of months, and it is all because of the cooperative nature of Jason, the County Human Service Department, the involvement of the Commissioners. I mean, I was up at one of the vaccination sites, and I saw Commissioner Schirmack driving a golf cart, picking people up. So, I mean, that just goes to show what this community is like and how people come together when times are really tough. This has been a very difficult time for the United Way over these past few months, but once again, people of this community came together like they always have. I said a few years ago, in my 33 years, I've handled floods, I've handled fires, and we've done, you know, recessions and bad economies. Whoever thought we'd be doing a pandemic? But it worked, and it worked because of the cooperation of individuals like all of you, all of you in this room, and people throughout this county who supported the United Way. As we move forward, it's kind of funny, we're looking at the numbers, and the numbers are starting to go down, and people are starting to say, okay, well, this is over with, the pandemic's done. But the second wave, from an economic standpoint, from a social service standpoint, is right around the corner. We're beginning to see more individuals come into our agencies for help with things like emergency food, emergency rent, emergency fuel. One of the things that was off our radar screen for a little bit is the problem that individuals will be having in the future with things like fuel delivery. We're seeing in the papers that, and on the news, that many companies are having a problem with employment. This also ties into some of the fuel delivery systems. So in the past, when we were able to deliver emergency fuel within a few hours, it may now take a couple of days because of a lack of truck drivers and a lack of delivery of fuel, which means that we are now looking at setting up emergency shelters for individuals during the cold weather months. The food pantries, you'll see them kicking to high gear once again with the cost of food rising. It's going to create another situation within our community. So we're asking the community to join together once again, help the United Way, and help not only the United Way, but help the nonprofit organizations in the community that are trying to meet these needs and create another emergency in our community. So again, I thank you, I thank you for the proclamation. It's always nice, and especially for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you do. Ricky, you have time for a quick picture? Want them up here or down there?
Up here, it's good.
Guys, want to come up?
I'll say to the steps.
That's good.
If you're younger than I could use the...
Smile. Smile a couple. Okay, good. Thank you.
To go on about Gary's remarks, we, the entire county, the entire staff, particularly Brian Jeffers and Brenda Sacco and Frank Regerio, and everyone came together to make this possible. It's Tracy Harsh, the deputy of the county. She, it's, it was a joint effort, and it was, it worked, and we did a good job, and again, we have to thank them all.
We had no rulebook either.
No, no rulebook. And the state wasn't a lot of help at the beginning.
No.
But we, you know, and again, Brian Jeffers particularly, I'd like to thank. Okay. Resolutions. Two one zero two seven three.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved, filed as Lackawanna County's general fund number is 330-786-331-399, inclusive total of $4,306,333.46. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, $22,921,509.51. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution two one zero two six nine.
Authorizing the submission of the PCCD grant. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the authorization to authorize the submission of a grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the county adult probation and parole grant in aid in the amount of $198,536. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Treatment Court Coordinator, Mary Zeslaw.
Good morning. Lackawanna County Treatment Court applied for a grant for adult probation, and we're looking for your approval. It is to supplement the overtime. It is a PCCD grant, and it's for $198,536. Adult probation, what they do with the overtime is they will do home visits, we do drug screenings, we do transports if we have to drive to another county to pick up somebody to bring them up here to Lackawanna County. So that's, you know, kind of like in a nutshell, the stuff that adult probation does on their overtime, just so that all the overtime doesn't come out of the county funds. I use this grant to help supplement that.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Yeah. Resolution two one zero two seven zero.
Authorizing Penn Dot Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Application. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Multimodal Transportation Fund Program, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County requests a multimodal transportation fund grant in the amount of $1,405,000 from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to be used for the replacement of and related work for Bridge Number 1-T304 Plank Road Cliff in Township, PA. And be it for it to resolve that the applicant does hereby designate Chairwoman Deborah Dominic Esquire as the official to execute all documents, agreements between Lackawanna County and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacko.
Good morning. This resolution is authorizing the filing of a Penn Dot Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Application in the amount of $1.4 million to replace the Plank Road Temporary Bridge in Clifton Township with a permanent bridge structure. Questions?
Thank you, Brenda. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution two one zero two seven one.
Authorizing the filing of a RACP grant application for Lackawanna County Parks Improvement Project. Whereas Lackawanna County Parks Improvement Project entails design, construction, infrastructure, and other related costs to provide necessary updates and amenities to Lackawanna County's parks system, and whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Fund as a source to finance the project, and whereas Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairwoman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $500,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners, once again, here is Ms. Sacko.
This resolution is authorizing the filing of the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Lackawanna County Park Improvement Project in the amount of $500,000 for the construction, infrastructure, and other costs related to Lackawanna County Park redevelopment and improvement projects.
Thank you, Brenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two one zero two seven two.
Authorizing the filing of a RACP grant application for the Treatment Court Advocacy Center. Whereas the Treatment Court Advocacy Center of Lackawanna County Project entails the construction and renovation of three floors of an existing building to accommodate apartments for transitional housing for women and children in recovery in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and whereas, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, the Treatment Court Advocacy Center of Lackawanna County has proposed that the county assist the Treatment Court Advocacy Center of Lackawanna County in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas, the county desires to assist the Treatment Court Advocacy Center of Lackawanna County in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairwoman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file and accept, file to accept, and an application in the amount of $2 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of the Treatment Court Advocacy Center of Lackawanna County for the project. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners, once again, here is Ms. Sacko.
This is another resolution that's authorizing the filing of a RACP grant application with the Commonwealth. This is on behalf of the Treatment Court Advocacy Center of Lackawanna County in the amount of $2 million. It's for the renovation of the third, fourth, and fifth floors of an existing building at 120 Wyoming Avenue to accommodate apartments for transitional housing for women and children while the women are in recovery and working along with the Lackawanna County Treatment Court.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Resolution two one zero two seven five.
Authorizing the filing of a RACP grant application for the Jared Yoder Foundation. Whereas, the Jared Yoder Foundation Patriot Resource Center at Marywood Project entails the renovations and necessary infrastructure of the former Scranton State School for the Deaf to assist veterans and their families in need with the creation of a multi-generation mixed-use campus for veterans and their families at the Mary, at the Marywood South Campus located in the city of Scranton and Dunmore, Pennsylvania. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, the Jared Yoder Foundation has proposed that the county assist the Jared Yoder Foundation in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas, the county desires to assist the Jared Yoder Foundation in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairwoman of the Lackawanna, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $5 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of the Jared Yoder Foundation for the project. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners, once again, here is Director Sacko.
This is again, another RACP filing with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This time, it's on behalf of the Jared Yoder Foundation in the amount of $5 million. This is for renovations of the former Scranton State School for the Deaf, and it's going to be for mixed-use campus for veterans and their families at the Marywood South Campus, which is located in the city of Scranton, Dunmore. It totals 10.5 acres and 169,845 square feet of building space. So this again is another great project that we're supporting.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone have any questions for Brenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two one zero two seven six.
Authorizing the filing of a RACP grant application for Montage Mountain Resorts. Whereas, the Montage Mountain Resorts LP Project entails the construction, infrastructure, and other related costs to construct and develop a 9,750-square-foot conference center and 150-room independently branded hotel on Montage Mountain in Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, the Montage Mountain Resorts LP has proposed that the county assist Montage Mountain Resorts LP in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas, the county desires to assist Montage Mountain Resorts LP in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairwoman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby, is hereby authorized to file and to accept an application in the amount of $12 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of Montage Mountain Resorts LP Fourth Project. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners, once again, here is Director Sacko.
Again, this is another RACP capital program application, and we're submitting to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, this time on behalf of Montage Mountain Resorts LP in the amount of $12 million, and this is for a new 150-room hotel and 9,750-square-foot conference center at Montage Mountain Resorts.
Been busy, Brenda.
I've been busy.
Yeah. Explain to everyone what the RACP applications are, so that they realize it's not something that's set in stone.
Sure. It's, so it's a competitive grant program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of the Budget, supporting economic development, community development projects. Again, it's competitive, it must have an itemization within the budget, and the round recently opened, and they were all due November 1st. So they will apply through us, we'll be doing on their behalf, and then the Commonwealth will come back and state if the applicants are afforded or not, and if they are, then we will administer on their behalf.
Especially for something like Montage, the development of that hotel, I mean, that's increased revenue for the county.
Yes.
On the road, which is very important, so, yeah.
Yeah. It's a great thing. All right. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution two one zero two seven seven. Last one, Brenda.
Authorizing the filing of a RACP grant application on behalf of Scranton Jefferson 321 LLC, whereas, the 333 Jefferson Project entails the construction, infrastructure, and other related costs to construct and develop a six-story mixed-use facility at 333 Jefferson Avenue in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and whereas, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital program funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Scranton Jefferson 321 LLC has proposed that the county assist Scranton Jefferson 321 LLC in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas, the county desires to assist Scranton Jefferson 321 LLC in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairwoman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file and to accept an application in the amount of $4 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of Scranton Jefferson 321 LLC for the project. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners, one last time, here is Director Sacko.
So this is, this is the last filing for a RACP application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Again, this one's on behalf of Scranton Jefferson 321 LLC. It's in the amount of $4 million, and it's for the development of a new market-rate ground-up six-story unit apartment complex with 20,000 square feet of retail commercial ground floor space, and that's in Scranton.
Lot of activity in Scranton, that's great. All right. Anyone have any questions for Brenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Brenda.
Thanks.
Okay. Resolution two one zero two seven nine.
Approving Area Agency on Aging Amendments. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Amendments with the following: Weinberg Northeast Regional Food Bank, and Skills in Scranton, the workforce development affiliate of the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce as attached. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Good morning. The first amendment is to our CEO Weinberg contract. We had a protective services situation in which we needed to do home-delivered meals in Luzerne County, and our home-delivered meal provider doesn't, doesn't cover that jurisdiction. But it is, in this current environment, it does make sense for us also to have a backup for home-delivered meals in case we have workforce issues at Meals on Wheels, which is our current, you know, provider of all our home-delivered meals.
Thank you. Any questions?
Why don't you explain to them why we're delivering meals?
It was a protective service situation where the gentleman who's, who's under investigation chose to locate himself in a hotel in Luzerne County, so we're finishing that investigation and making sure that we cover everything at our end and do our due diligence.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Jason. Resolution two one zero two, not eight oh.
Entering into a lease agreement. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a lease agreement with Jefferson Township on behalf of the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging for senior citizen, senior center activities. Agreement to commence November 1st, 2021, and expire December 31st, 2023. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021. Once again, Commissioners, here is Director Kavulich.
We are very excited to be able to open a senior center in Jefferson Township in a building that has been sitting unused, that was previously designated as a senior citizen center. As you know, in the Area Agency on Aging's four-year plan to the Commonwealth and to the Administration for Community Living, our goal was to open a senior center in the North Pocono region. Even though this is a month-to-month lease right now, we're going to hopefully build a population of attendees in Jefferson Township and expand from there. If the space becomes unavailable, we already have a backup space that we're working with at the fire department just up the road.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Anyone have any questions for Jason? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution two one zero two seven eight.
Appointments to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board with the terms to commence on November 1st, 2021, and continue through October 31st, 2024. Amy Leister, Vice President of Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, sitting in as the Business Representative. Jim Wanzek, Executive Director, Agency for Community Empowerment of NEPA, sitting in as a mandated community-based organization representative. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 3rd, 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Anyone have any questions about this? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jennifer Spiller, I'm with the Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veterans Affairs. I was asked, or requested, Mr. Dave Isley to come and make an introduction. I've been to, I cover a region of 13 counties in northeastern Pennsylvania with the Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veterans Affairs. I also have my colleague here with me. I just wanted to thank you guys in setting an example of how to, where I just wanted to thank you guys in setting an example of how to, we're supporting our veterans and what we're doing. Not only is Lackawanna County a great example for the region that I cover, but throughout the state. You guys are doing great work in supporting the veterans and I just wanted to commend that. Dave is an amazing resource that we rely on heavily, as you probably know. But just, you know, an example, like the Jared Yoder Foundation, we work with many of those individuals, organizations throughout the area. Commissioner Schermak, thank you for including me in the Suicide Prevention Coalition. That's been great. You know, as we look at this next couple of years, suicide prevention is going to be kind of something that we'll be moving forward with and promoting. But in addition, looking at our aging veterans, partnering with, you know, all of our Area Agency on Aging, partnering with those on how to care for as our aging veteran population grows. So I just wanted to introduce myself, so you guys had a face to the name of, we've probably interacted with before, but just wanted to make the introduction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Anyone else?
Mike Janetta from Scott Township. I just wanted to comment on the proposed budget for 2022. Going through it, I note that it appears that there's an eight point eight million dollar shortfall in the budget this year and it's going to be covered with taking money from the county surplus so that there would be no tax increase. And I know, and we all recall last year, taxes were raised eleven point three percent for an additional six point five million dollars of revenue to cover the deficit and to cover pension obligations. And Commissioner Schermak had asked, he just, he was new on the board last year, and asked, what if we do nothing? And I think Mr. Durkin said that, well, the deficit would probably go from six million to probably nine million next year. Well, taxes were raised, we got six, six and a half million dollars in additional revenue, and here we are with an eight point eight million dollar raise. So the nice thing about budgets is that it's, sometimes they're a red flag and they're a warning of a problem on the horizon. And I think it's probably time to start cutting. There seems to be a spending problem in the county, not a revenue problem. We raised taxes last year and we still, now we still have an eight point eight million dollar deficit. So I would recommend that there be a reduction across the board in every department of expenses, probably a hiring freeze. And really, there should be no raises for management employees when the county's running a deficit of eight point eight million for this year. It's nice that we've got the surplus to take the money from for this year, probably that'll happen next year at some point, the surplus runs out and then you're looking at a big tax increase. Again, the nice thing about the budget is you can see a warning of a problem on the horizon. Now would be the time to start to take care of it so it's not a huge problem down the road. And my suggestion, again, is to start cutting across the board in every department so that the problem's not extremely difficult. Now you still have time to tackle it and now's the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Commissioners, other business? Chris?
I'll comment to Mike for the budget. I agree. We looked at the increase that was going to solve the problems for the next few years and it didn't even make a dent in it. We have an increase of eight point eight million dollars. I put together a budget study committee. We've looked at things over the last year, very difficult during the pandemic to get people together, extremely difficult. And we, you know, I have different things that we can look at. We could look at the prison wants to, you know, we're trying to save money at the prison, but yet there's a million dollar increase in their budget for next year. IT, there's several million dollars increased. I mean, the list goes on and on. But to keep it simple and to maybe address the situation in 2022, it's something as simple as an average across the board of cutting, it basically comes a six point eight six percent cut across the board. So an average of about seven percent would balance the budget. A hundred and forty-eight million dollar deficit, or I mean, a hundred and forty-eight million dollar budget, I think we can find that. I would encourage us to try it. Anything's going to help, but if we could, I mean, I think we could balance the budget moving forward. Twenty twenty-three is going to be another issue. I mean, this is, just like Mike just said, it's, it's an indicator, it's not going away. I'm not raising taxes. You know, we have to look at increasing revenues, that's with these grants coming out and then projects like what Charlie Jefferson is doing and then John Basalaga and numerous other developers. I mean, that's where our money's going to have, are going to come from, our increased revenues. But for the taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer, we're all taxpayers. I think we need to really take a deep look and make the cuts that are necessary and move forward with a balanced budget.
Thank you, Chris. Part of it is, is simple as far, as far as expanding our tax base and that's what we're trying to do. We have a better relationship with economic development and the chamber and different things than we've ever had. It's not as simple as cutting apartments. We have, we deal with seven unions, we have collective bargaining agreements we have to live up to, we have no option. If we don't, then we end up in the same situations. We have to fund pensions. You can't, you can't decrease the budget by cutting expenses that much. It just doesn't work. Everyone's got great ideas, except they never bring it to the table. All right? The bottom line is we have to increase revenue. And that's what we are trying to do with Brenda Sacco and the whole economic development community. That's the driving force of Lackawanna County right now, increase revenue. You can't, you know, it's great, that's, that's a wonderful idea. Everybody gets a six percent decrease. Doesn't work, it's impossible. It's going to end up costing more money than it's, you know, than you can imagine. So therefore, we're, you know, we're, we're working on it and we've been working on it actually very hard. And part of what we got into first year with the tax increase was what we were left and you have to deal with it. And, you know, you can't kick the can down the road forever. Eventually, you have to do your job. And this is, this is what we're trying to do and we are going, doing very well with it. Okay, that's it. I'm going to thank everybody and entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. No question? All in favor?
Aye.